The owl is on its ear.
Hold on just one second, my computer's not happy.
That's okay.
I don't think it's very loud. Well, we are recording on one side, so I think we're okay as long as we're not crashing. Okay, we'll see you soon.
I'd like to welcome everyone back to the school committee and that's our school committee for August 22nd, 2023. If we could all please rise for the president, Jax.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could just go make standing for a brief moment of silence for Falmouth Public Schools' last icon. A short time ago, Mr. White, Mr. Doug White was quite a figure at Falmouth Public Schools, not just at Lawrence, but then again at the high school, and he was a great human. So if we could just take a pause. Okay, I thank you all. Okay. Mike, could you do the mission and vision?
FPS mission: The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student experience experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue the goal of curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. FPS vision: Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you. Public comment. Now, persons of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to open meeting law, the committee cannot take action on public comments. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion for an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12 MA.us. Is there anyone here for public comment? And I forgot to mention, seeing no public comment, I forgot to mention, if there's anyone who is making a recording, if you could please let us know.
Billy, guys, Falmouth Enterprise, I didn't want them to...
You're the one.
I'm making a recording.
You are, yeah.
Megan, thank you, Gavin. Nice to see you.
All right, so I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Dur for the meaning of the Wampanoah Land Acknowledgement. I would love you. Yeah, you can read it. I would love you to read it.
Okay, thank you. The land acknowledgement was developed by the school committee and voted on June 2nd, 2021. Falmouth Public Schools acknowledges that we are gathering on the unceded ancestral land of the Wampanoah Nation. We recognize and respect the Wampanoah people, including those of Secundeset, Racoit, Sipulisset, Tetakit, and Chapacoit as original stewards of what is now known as the town of Falmouth, and honor their enduring relationship with this land. This land acknowledgement is an intentional act to counter the erasure of indigenous people and to demonstrate respect for their sovereign rights. We are committed to educating ourselves and our students about the long-standing history of the Wampanoah people. In alignment with core values of Falmouth Public Schools, we pledge to build an ongoing partnership with the Wampanoah Nation.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to Act on the Lawrence School Bulldog MOA, Unit A, B, and C. We did discuss this during executive session, but I would like to make a motion to act on it. Who would like to make a motion?
Oh, I have that motion.
Thank you, Mike. Second?
My second.
Any discussion?
Can we just say that, so that the public knows that it's proposing to continue Bulldog time? I don't want them to think that they're...
All right.
Yeah, so this would be an agreement to continue Bulldog time at Lawrence.
Any other discussion?
I need to raise a good salary.
Say yeah?
I need to get to raise the salary. Enhance the salary by five dollars a week.
Okay.
Which reflects the...
Correct. Thanks. Great. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposeds? Any abstentions? Excellent, I'm glad that passes. Now, I'd like to move on to Act on the surplus vehicle of the 2006 Crown Victoria, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dur.
Thank you, yes. So the vehicle that is usually stationed here at the ag building, we can no longer drive it, and to pass inspection and put it back on the road, it's going to cost $10,000. The car, the vehicle itself, is quite rusted, and we do not believe that there's value to put $10,000 into this vehicle. We try to keep it all the way. We have put money into it over the years, and we think it's coming back.
Even though it's a landmark when you're driving your parking lot.
It's infamous. We have to get our packets delivered via that vehicle.
But just think, when we get our first electric vehicle, we can park that there and start a new landmark and a new era.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second, we're on a roll here.
I like it. Any discussion?
My only objection is just making sure we have what we need to start school, since we don't have this anymore.
Oh, it's not being used. It hasn't been used for quite some time.
Just check it out.
Any other questions or discussion?
I guess along those lines. It sounds like there's not a need for a replacement, so there's not a replacement.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor? Any opposeds? Any extensions? Great, I'm glad that that is moving on in life. However, I'd like to make a side comment, Sue, that your packet was delivered. Maybe we can circle back on that one. Okay. First read on the superintendent evaluation timeline. I would take that over to Kelly.
I'll take it. So you should have the document in front of you. If you skip down to the what's new section, we'll start there. The other things are more for us. So one of the things that is in the timeline that's not been there before is that we've committed to creating a mid-cycle tool to use for evaluation, to sort of make sure that we're on track throughout the year and that we don't leave everything for the end. So we're taking that on, we're going to make some kind of paper something. We're not sure exactly what it's going to look like. We're going to meet and figure it out and then show what everyone kind of knows it so that we can keep on top of the evaluation process throughout the year. Oh, sorry.
Don't we have to agree to do that first, though? As the Falmouth School, do we have to agree to that because it's a change?
So that's what this would be, that's why I'm highlighting.
Okay.
Yep.
Just to get them straight.
I agree. I don't know if we have to.
Yep.
But...
When we vote on it in September 12th, that would be different.
When we vote on the timeline.
That would be different.
Second is setting some time aside, vote at the mid-cycle time of year, and then also at the end of the year, really being focused on meeting with Lori about your observations, your mid-cycle evaluation tool, and then the summative. So we were just trying to call that out in the timeline. So you see there's like a week-long period in there when you actually can meet with her. And the last piece was we've committed to creating guidelines for the compilation of the summatives. So there's a lot of details in MASC documents and in materials from DSE about creating that final summative evaluation document that we wrote on at the end of the year. But there's also a lot of leeway within that. So you can do this, or you can do it that way, or you can do this or that way. So we put in our timeline that we're going to sit down and really write it out and agree on that before we get to the final part and we actually have to do it. So we're sort of setting the rules ahead of the actual evaluation. And then on page two, you see all of the different meetings. They're called out by who's doing them. So all the ones that say evaluation subcommittee are not things you have to attend unless you're on the evaluation subcommittee. The school committee items all happen during our school committee meetings. And if you can, there's also some that say deadlines, which are just calling out the dates when things are due. But we do have an immediate edit. If you can go down to September 26th, right now it says that the evaluation subcommittee is going to meet at 5:00, but we actually can meet at 4:30 because there's a budget subcommittee meeting that day.
So what did you say, 5:00?
We'll switch out at 5:00, cross out 5:00 and write 4:30. And we're not voting on it today, we might still, so we have time for discussion on that. We know of that wanting. And then on page two of the timeline, we also know that on May 7th, Terry has kind of shared the research she did last year, that we cannot actually email this document. So we're proposing a very short school committee meeting because the only way you can distribute the summative evaluation is by holding a meeting or email for as part of the packet. So that May 7th date, we would have a very short school committee meeting that hopefully most people can make at least a form for the meeting, and we'll distribute the summative evaluation. That way everyone will have a chance to review it for a week before we have their votes.
The language on the legality of that, can we, before we decide what we're going to do, because we asked Mary Gans to review it. She has the legal knowledge, because there is some language in the paragraph that I think we want to be sure we follow because it's confusing to read the second set of ways you can do it. But do you think maybe we could put in there to have Mary review it?
I think that's a... Why don't we just send the school document to her before we vote on it? And just have her make sure we're not breaking the rules?
Sure.
Yeah.
But overall, you'll see that the overall process is the same as it has been in years past, except for those few additions, that we will... The evaluation committee will work with Lori to establish her goals, and we'll review them with her, and then those goals will come to the school committee for a vote. And that sets the tone for the whole year. Those are the things that Lori will be working on for the full year. Then halfway through the year, we'll do this new mid-cycle tool, as well as completing observations of things that people have seen when seeing Lori in action. And then getting close to the end of the year, that similar cycle repeats, where we do more observations, we complete our individual evaluations, we meet with Lori. So it's a very similar process with the exception of those few additions. Does anybody have thoughts, questions, comments? Because there are a couple changes.
Mike?
We're not voting tonight.
I just have one question. Under benchmarks in bold, it says highly encourage everyone to submit one observation. Then the following line says minimum of six observations. So what is that highly encourage everyone to submit one observation? What...
So that's kind of confusing, that's a good point. So everyone is encouraged to observe Lori in action at least once throughout the year and do that form where you write what you observed and what was at a goal, and then we share them so that everybody can see the things that everyone else couldn't see. Like if I happen to be at a meeting that no one else is at, I can write it up and share that. Everyone is encouraged to do one, but we set goals of let's have at least three by halfway through the year, and then another three by the end of the year. So a total of six through the year, but it's not six per person, so that's confusing. Is that what you mean?
It's not three per person.
It's not three per person either, it's one.
Oh, it's one per person.
One per person.
Is collectively three or six.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Right, right, right. And even my explanation is terrible, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Terry?
Also, I sent out some ideas that came up last year. I don't know if people went to that. I like to think, because I wrote it, that you did, but I'm not a kid. On the observations, one thing I remembered mentioning was on the form that we have, it says recommendations, and just, I was wondering if those phrases are also breaking open meeting laws because you're giving opinions to the whole group? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
It's supposed to be to me, though.
Right, it's for Lori, though.
But no, the whole committee sees those. So I remember that struck me that maybe we should have Mary look at that sentence, too.
Yeah, that's a good plan.
Because...
Because that form can certainly be tweaked. And for new people, when we get to the part of actually needing to do these things, like you can fill out the observation form or fill out the evaluation, we will have a session probably on the school committee, and we will go through the whole thing so you're not on your own. Terry, thank you for reminding me of that. They're ready.
Any other questions?
Sue, I'm not sure, but I thought in the state law, there was some mention in regards to, once it's compiled, that it is to be given to someone other than a member of the evaluation committee, an independent person. And so if the subcommittee could discuss that and come up with a person, whether it be someone like Mary or whatever, I'd appreciate looking into that.
Anything else?
Thanks for all the work you did on that. I can tell you did a lot to pick on it.
We tried to really think about something the same, but yeah, and that came out. Good.
Even though the committee asked you more work, but you did.
But there was a lot of talk on that.
Yes, please.
I don't think you mentioned the other thing, too, is that after it's all over, that we will review the overall process.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Providing feedback, so let's talk about what's in store and suggestions for the next cycle.
Yes.
So, you know, we'll be doing the evaluation of our own work, which we shouldn't be doing, and providing it so that we can use. Then what work did you do?
Yeah, that would be nice, too, I think, for like this creation of the new tool. Like everyone's going to need to weigh in on whether it was helpful. And if it's not, you know, we don't have to keep using it, but we were just, we're trying something. So being really thoughtful about everyone getting feedback, both halfway through the year and then at the end of the year. We actually even built in a meeting after everything is done to sit down and talk about whether or not it went well and what wouldn't pressure you. Much like you did, Terry, with the notes for what we'll ask, you know, what we need to think about for next year.
Any other questions, comments? All right, great. Moving on to the first read of the budget timeline, 2324. Dr. Dur, take it away.
Thank you. So this is the typical timeline that we have. I built in one additional budget subcommittee meeting in September. Otherwise, this is exactly the process that we have followed in the past. So just wanting to talk about the budget subcommittee early before we get started on the process and, you know, just having that discussion, you know, but then moving, you know, through the principles, meeting the FinCon, the presentations at school committee, and the presentations at the schools, you know, for the community to hear the budget presentation. And then the votes there in February is almost pretty much what we've had. It follows the process that we're supposed to follow. Any questions?
Kelly?
I just noticed that I think this page is wrong. So it says, "School Committee Reviews," the very first one, "Reviews and Acts on Budget Timeline."
No, that's correct. That's correct.
We don't have a school committee.
We don't have a school committee in that day.
We meet the 12th. It's only in my mind because...
I'm sorry.
In my mind.
That's when we vote, right, right, right. It's the 12th.
Okay.
The subcommittee's not meeting that day.
Right, right.
The subcommittee's meeting on the 12th, so that's correct. I thought it was the extra subcommittee meeting, sorry.
We're not having any extras. We're not having any extras.
Okay. Okay. I hear you loudly, but just change that to the 12th. You have a question?
Yes, please, Sue.
On October 24th, is the school committee will be meeting with the finance committee as a group, the whole school committee, or would that be the budget subcommittee?
It is the subcommittee. I'm sorry.
It's okay, Sharon.
Can I speak clarify that? Number five?
Oh, five. School committee, FinCon. It would be, it is typically the budget subcommittee and...
Yeah, it is the sub.
... members.
Right, so it is sub.
Our staff.
It should say subcommittee here.
Okay.
Are those meetings zoomed?
No.
No, there's now two people. Can people who are not on the committee go to those meetings? There's four members this year.
It's a public meeting.
But...
But you have to be careful of quorum stuff. There's four members. When there were three members, you could just pop in on things. So, I mean, if we just want to go into, because the budgets are so confusing, it's nice to get a little reading along the way and just see what's up. So can we...
Yeah, because we had this happen before. It must have been years ago that we had four people on the subcommittee, I guess, because this used to happen. And so what we did was the person who was not part of the subcommittee was just an observer, so they sat not at our main table, and they listened in on everything, but they didn't ask questions or make comments.
That's good, that's all I wanted to do.
That's how we did it.
Is just listen, now we end.
Mike?
Do you post that? I'm sorry, Kelly, do you post that as a subcommittee or for the meeting?
They're posting as the subcommittee.
Okay.
And FinCon has posted them, too, I would assume.
FinCon, I have to, I don't know.
If they have that, too.
Any notice? All right, well, we're going to soak in the budget timeline. Moving on to the discussion of the budget and capital plan. Dr. Dur, it's all you.
Thank you. So as discussed previously, we are sharing some budget information. We will do this once a month. So I'm going to turn it over to our assistant director, Paul Dart, and he's going to walk through these four documents.
Everybody makes a note. What you did just mention, this is sort of an evolutionary document. So if you have the input, if you want to see more information, if you want to drill down later on at different topics, we can always do that. Our plan is to have a budget presentation update roughly once a month for the last school committee meeting in the month to give you an update. So first, this is a high-level review of just fiscal year 23. This is the first document with a few lines on it. Said Falmouth Public Schools fiscal year 23 budget versus actual. And the total budget is $54,424. And that is after the allocation, additional allocation of $1.474 from the town in November from additional Chapter 70 funds from the state. And the budget of salaries were $45,559. You might blow that. Non-salary expenses were $8,864. That's again the budget number. If you look over to the far right corner, you see we ended up pretty much right on target, just slightly over. What is under budget, we had excess funds available, roughly $31,579. That's pretty close on a budget of $51 million. That number is pretty good. There's a lot of moving parts throughout the year, especially at the end of the year, and we'll go into some of that. But I think one of the key aspects of this year is that the expenditure of the money, additional funds that the town gave us, the state gave to the town, was to hire a reading specialist, English language development teachers, the school adjustments counselors, special ed teachers, and teaching assistants, and all. So that's how the additional funds were used. Also, when this negotiation with the teachers' union finished, there was a retro increase of 3%. There was a 2% target in the budget. So that was an additional $350,000 in costs. There are typically one-time payments that occur when a teacher retires. Those aren't necessarily budgeted for, but they do occur, and roughly $190,000 in costs generated to that. And if you look at the second slide, which is the colorful slide, it's a lot of numbers on it. And this is the allocation by school. There's a lot of data on it, I apologize for it, but this is essentially how each school ended up at the end of the year. For one cautionary note, at the end of the year, there's a lot of reallocation of budget lines. So the school district has authority to move within the two budget lines of salaries and non-salaried expenses. So for example, if you're up, if you're at need of $300,000, use a round number, additional salary budget, you can move that from unspent monies in the non-salaried budget and increase your salary budget. All right. You could also have, the school district has the authority to move it from a budget line to one of the revolving lines of one of the grant allocations as well. So at the end of the year, when you see this breakdown, you'll see that Falmouth High School, Falmouth High School is over budget by $436,000. It's over budget because of the addition of a reading teacher, addition of a math teacher, school adjustment counselors, and so on. However, if you look down at the next category, Lawrence School was under budget by $400,000. And that was really the reallocation of monies right at year end, where we were quickly closing the books and we moved money from non-salaried expenses into salary expenses. And we needed a single home to do that for the ease of budgeting. And so we moved it into Lawrence School. So it's not a fair comparison when you look at this on a school-by-school basis, is my point. This is sort of the artistry of year-end management of the budget. The bottom line is still the $31,000 above budget, but it does get very lumpy during the year. So my point to this is, as we go forward into fiscal year 24, our hope is we'll have a lot less reallocation towards the end of the year than we had this past year. There's just a lot of moving parts, particularly because of the contract negotiations. So with that, is it any questions? We're going to start this program. One, if you look on to the next slide, the point of this slide is to really show you some of the large budget items outside of salaries that occur. And for example, our bus contract, we budgeted last year for $2,150,000. We expanded by $257,000, so we're running a budget by $9,200,000. We then make another, just, these are just examples of a large part budget items. Just the maintenance on our vehicles. Just the maintenance on our vehicles were two hundred and thirty-six thousand. Our special education transportation, that is transport where we have to use a third-party to transport a student out of district to a, another school, uh, not within the district, uh, that came in at about a hundred and forty thousand. Our other district tuitions, uh, that are on the budget were one million, one sixty-nine. Our maintenance, uh, and this is a key category for us as we talk about the capital plan, a maintenance was one million, ninety-seven thousand, uh, almost two hundred thousand over budget. We're really trying to focus in on this and bring this number down and more, and allocate more items to our capital plan, uh, because our current maintenance budget is really, it's really been tight. And, uh, you know, we're dealing with older buildings that are needing repair, you know, they're kept up well. But this, you know, as they age, more and more repairs are necessary, so we're shifting some of this allocation to the, uh, ten-year capital plan. The other key budget item is, uh, the utilities. We spent a million, three, million, three six on, uh, on electricity and our gas bills, et cetera. So, um, that too is a significant portion, portion of our non-salaried expenses. So this just gives you an eye, a sense of how much of our non-salaried expenses are actually tied up in the really big ticket items throughout the course of the year. So, which brings us to our ten-year capital plan. This, uh, this version, uh, this is the most recent version, uh, we have a couple of updates on projects. And let me just start by, uh, saying that, uh, the town is, uh, in the process of changing. It hasn't been approved yet, but by the finance committee. But rather than having two periods of going to the, uh, finance committee to approve projects, they're now trying to consolidate it into once per year. That's not yet been approved, my understanding from the finance committee, but that's the intention. With that, we had moved one of the major projects into this year, which is the North Thelmoth roof project. Also, uh, changing in this plan from what you've seen before is the, uh, Lawrence cafeteria roof. Uh, we did bring in a, uh, a, an oldest project manager, an engineering firm, to work with us on that roof. Their thoughts were that we needed to increase the allocation. We originally had that project down for three hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, we've increased it to five hundred and fifty thousand, uh, based on their recommendations. And just given its size, um, we felt we needed to engage a, uh, oldest project manager, uh, for that particular project. So, their fee is included in that, uh, that project, if approved by all of you and then approved by, uh, the town, the finance committee in the November ballot, that project will begin next summer. Uh, it would take several months until we do that approve, all right? So that's the, uh, you know, just to run down this list stretch quickly, is the cafeteria roof would be the first project. Stage lighting, uh, at Lawrence, again, this is replacing nineteen fifty-three equipment. Looking at nineteen fifty-three equipment, that needs to repair. Uh, PA systems from North Thelmoth, the, and from Lawrence Hall, that's actually one project that would be on the town ballot. The East Thelmoth sensing project is actually underway as we speak, should be finished by the end of the month. If that's approved, uh, then we would just reallocate that from the budget to the, uh, to the new article. Uh, the outdoor learning space is a, uh, currently, it's in the area behind East Thelmoth that, uh, is just a tar apron that is gathered weathered and chipped and dented and so on. That would be torn up and a concrete patio would put down, uh, and then some outdoor learning space would be developed, uh, from that as well. The tea-ticket painting project for fifty thousand, that would be exterior painting for this year. We have to do, if we drop down into system line products, uh, projects have painting projects that are both interior and exterior, uh, roughly fifty thousand dollars allocation, uh, for the year's fall. Going to get the system to the first area, uh, cameras, uh, there's roughly eighty-four cameras that are budgeted in this hundred and sixty-two thousand. That's throughout the district, uh, and it's covering the blind spots, both internally in the buildings and on the exterior as well. Doors we're looking to replace that are weathered, uh, or need to have additional security features. Flooring repairs that need to be done throughout the district, um, and van purchases that we've discussed as well. Those projects we discussed and voted on in the past, uh, they're the same amount. The only real change to this is, as I mentioned, is Lawrence cafeteria roof at the very top. And then we pushed up the, uh, North Thelmoth roof into fiscal year twenty-four, you know, to put it, to make the November ballot, if all is approved. We did go by and have the engineers, we're there again today at North Thelmoth. You know, there is a significant need, you know, we've evaluated the roof, all the exterior, you know, roofing and interior. The building is, badly, it is leaking and every, every, uh, rainstorm, whether it's a major rainstorm or not. So this roof is, is really desperately needs to be, uh, replaced.
Paul, can we, um, talk about, uh, about the solar and the.
So we've been, uh, we've been looking at three projects to, uh, from roofing standpoint, uh, over the course of the last couple of months, uh, North Thelmoth, as I just mentioned, East Thelmoth, and Morse Pond. Uh, the good news of, uh, the East Thelmoth is that the roof is okay, we don't need to replace it. Uh, Morse Pond's roof does need to be replaced. However, one of the parts of the examination was for the addition of solar power, uh, on the roofs. And, you know, we had the engineer at Westfield Associates down here today. And without a major reconstruction, uh, I mean, both internally and externally to the roof, you would not be able to support the weight of a solar panel, uh, on the roof. So, uh, there are other options for solar power that we, uh, we could pursue, but not on the roof. So, that was a disappointing news.
That was the roof of Morse Pond?
That was for, uh, North Thelmoth, all three.
All of them.
North Thelmoth, uh, uh, East Thelmoth, and Morse. Well, Morse Pond hasn't been fully available, but North Thelmoth and, uh, East Thelmoth are definitely off for putting solar power on the roofs.
So, um, you know, again, that, uh, FY twenty-four, you voted on, and that's fine. If we, um, if this goes through and the, the roof project, um, they determine the change in the process and it goes in November. In September, we will come back to you and, and ask you to vote on the North Thelmoth roof, since they want to move that to a November, not an April.
Mike?
I got just a quick question, um, Paul, I'm sorry. What is, what is recurving sidewalks at the Lawrence School?
Along the parking lot, along the roadway, you know, particularly in back. Uh, they want to take out the, uh, the curbs that are there, uh, the curbs are in really bad shape. They're in, uh, trip paths throughout the parking lot. So, uh, the effort is to redo not just the curbs, but actually eventually the parking lot itself, uh, for Lawrence School.
Okay, then just a quick follow-up question, if that's seven hundred and fifty thousand, and then in the same school, the track is seven hundred and fifty thousand, is there any way to flip those numbers so the track gets done sooner than the, the curbing? The reason I'm asking is that Morse Pond is, um, there's parents at Morse Pond trying to get, you know, CPC funds and raise money for a small track. Um, Lawrence, um, needs a track, and you're talking about, you know, eight, eight years before it gets approved. Last, last weekend, we had, you know, twelve, thirteen thousand people running. Are schools not having, you know, a track club, that kind of thing? And I don't know if that's possible inside the same school for the same money, or how that would work.
Right, so, just in terms of process, you know, the time out for a ten-year plan, but you, but it focuses on the fiscal, the current fiscal year.
Yes, okay.
So there's a lot of latitude to adjust some priorities in later years.
Okay.
And the fact, on the parking lot, what we're working with, there's two problems. One is, uh, the, the lighting in the parking lot, which we're working on. But the responsibility for the parking lot itself, the paving and the curbing, we're looking with the town, working with the town to sort of adjust and maybe have the town take care of that, of the EDBW budget. So, this, this, on the later year projects, there's a lot of flexibility to adjust these and.
Yeah.
And, and going down the road, yeah.
Thank you so much.
So we can add that to a budget subcommittee, not be able to, to actually start, you know, to, to drill down on all the other projects?
Thank you.
Carrie? I was thinking it's solar and parking lots, like, isn't it at Kenyans and East Thelmoth, they have those, um, solar panels on the parking lots? Are they wicked, are they very expensive to install, those solar things?
That's one of the, in fact, the engineer today was saying, your best option going forward is to, uh, to do solar covered parking spaces.
So they're gonna work on the parking lots and leave it at that on the air?
Yeah. So it's, it's, that's solar, like, right now, uh, where we ended up, we wanted to evaluate the roofs first as the.
Getting ahead of ourselves, all right?
No, 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 I didn't do that. It's a very viable solution right now.
Kelly? I don't think I'll expect an answer to this question, but I'm curious to know, um, if we can find out the answer. If, if we're gonna be submitting big ticket items like roofs in November for town meeting to decide who to put on the ballot, are they then going to be on the ballot still in the spring? Because then, I'm, the reason I'm asking and concerned about it is that's a long time to have cost estimates sitting without being able to move forward, and whether or not the estimates are even gonna be accurate by the time we find out if we can do them.
In full transparency, this just came to us last week.
Yes.
That we may need to move it to November and not the spring, and I, we don't know the, how, how that.
That's totally fair.
How that thought about.
But that's my question.
We wanted to make sure that we brought this to you, yeah, and started having that conversation.
And that's the very reason why we boosted the, uh, the, uh, the budget for the Lawrence School is because the bit is, the initial indication, the initial estimate, uh, was aging.
Right.
There's going to be significant price increases, so it's very rare, so what, you know, there is literally a million-dollar, uh, extra in this budget for the roof to try to cover us, uh, uh, on the cost of North Thelmoth, uh, to cushion. But we're constantly trying to get updates on these numbers as we go along, and, and then report back, what those new estimates were.
Yes, and we don't want a system setup that causes us to either go over budget, which is horrible.
That's right.
Or be asking the taxpayers to fund an amount that's not accurate, that we don't need. You know, either way, we, anyway, that's my two cents.
No, I, I agree, I appreciate that.
Two questions. One, you mentioned, um, looking at what can be shifted from the maintenance budget to the capital budget, and I'm curious what qualifies things for that shift and what the benefit is there.
Right, there are, there are a number of projects that would come up, and so, let me back up. Now, since, uh, this past April, we've been meeting regularly with the, led by Dr. Dorr, meeting regularly with the maintenance crew around the district in identifying projects, both immediate and long-term, that we can shift to the capital, uh, budget. So, uh, what qualifies for that, to be on the capital plan, is anything that's over twenty-five thousand. So that's the minimum size. But there are projects that are also part of a larger pool that are under twenty-five thousand that the town handles separately. So for example, the granite steps we needed to have appeared at, at Lawrence School. You know, the cement was broken, the steps were pulled away from, uh, from the structure and so on. So they were bringing a, a bulldozer and, and, uh, take out the steps, you know, shave down the old concrete, put the steps back and, uh, put back in the concrete. That project is nine thousand dollars. That would qualify under the second category, as small than twenty-five thousand, that it's on the list of projects for the town to approve under that second category. There's, the other, uh, cost is wheel repairs of Lawrence School. You know, just, it's been seven years since, since the windows were put in, so that now they have to come in and do all the mechanisms, uh, within the windows, general maintenance, uh, to upkeep the windows, working well. That's around fourteen thousand dollars, that too is on that list. So we're actively identifying projects, uh, that we can not fund in the budget, but fund in the second category, along with the bigger projects that we, uh, with, that we've just talked about, so.
I don't just add to that, I mean, and, and we've not accessed that other process before. It's in our conversations with the town, they probably do that. But for instance, when we put the, you know, the painting here, that is something that in the past we would have absorbed within our budget to try to, try to do, but we have too many buildings and the, the cost to, to have outside come in and do the painting. You know, it's, it's, so looking at it over time to try to, in the summer, you know, to, to contract to have some of the painting done to keep our buildings up, we would have tried to do that in our budget, but, you know, it could be year for year where we wouldn't have enough money to even try that. And so, um, you know, my new team with the Pauls here coming up with, um, that we could actually look at putting this in. So those are the conversations we've been having with town to try to move those. The doors is something we would have probably tried to absorb, being that we can only do one or two doors a year, right? But looking at it as a larger project that we have lots across the, the district that we've got to really maintain. So I give, I give a lot of credit for rethinking how we might be able to do it. I mean, you saw the, you know, the purpose we, we're highlighting the maintenance budget here for you is to see how, you know, very tight it is. But that, so, so that's some of the shift in thinking that, that we're doing.
Second question is just when you're looking at, um, whether it's roof or parking lot-based solar, curious about the, the cost analysis there and whether the energy savings that would be generated by that, those panels, is, is being compared, that offsetting of the initial upfront costs?
It would, it would definitely be compared in the end. We're not at, at stage yet, because we, we're at the can it be done stage. But when we look to, for example, the idea of doing a covered parking lot with solar panels, and it's definitely part of that analysis that we will show Paul and say, you know, this is what we hope to get out of, uh, from an energy savings perspective versus the capital.
So, is there any opportunity to apply for some CPC money in regards to recreational areas, like a playground with a fencing? That some of the schools are just like forty years old with fencing.
That's right, that's right. And, and, and yes, in fact, we, we do indicate it on, on the base here for some of the areas. Currently, the, uh, the plant, the, the. Currently, the plant, the project for this year, we're not aware of anything that's pending right at the moment. But we, it is a avenue of funding that we want to do for later projects.
Thank you.
You're talking about specifically the fencing of the playgrounds?
Well, I know there's situations in regards to what CPC money can be used for. And my understanding is it is recreation is one of the ones you can. And so a playground would be considered recreation?
The playground, but I didn't know about the fencing. But it is a good question. I think we should have asked him specifically.
Yeah, like for instance, at Morse Pond, all the fencing towards the front and sides on the field is so bad. And it's so bad.
It is, it is.
CPC did pay for fencing a few years ago for the, for the little kids. They didn't pay for fencing, yeah. I guess that's enough.
All right, well, we'll have, we'll have conversations.
Any other questions or comments? Because I have a few. Paul, is there any opportunity for any kind of temporary repair at the Lawrence School parking lot? I'm specifically thinking of when town meeting gets out and it's dark and it's late and we have some town meeting members of a certain age, if you will, that I am concerned of walking, you know, I've seen people kind of stumble and I'm concerned. So I'm wondering if there's any hope of, just from a safety perspective?
Yeah, our hope is that we're gonna, we should be carrying back from the engineer on the lighting project that had previously approved the 300,000. We are, within a couple of days of carrying back from there and have that project soaked up and then put out to bed. So we're trying to get that project moving along quickly.
I hope that that happens before, you know, fiscal year '26. I'm also thinking of CPC funds for the track at Lawrence. I know Lawrence used to have a track. And I understand that it had to be removed, but I'm sort of thinking perhaps that could be a discussion as well. Because we do have a lot of active people in town and one more place for people to get out and move their bodies. So I'm concerned for that as well. And I have another question, I don't remember what it is. I have something and then maybe you'll pick it up.
I hope this is not too odorous because I love it. Like, I love getting, seeing some of the spend downs for the high-ticket items and where we're at, you know, at, and I think, as you have said, this is sort of the format that we're going to see for our monthly reports. And I really appreciate it. It makes me feel so much more. So thank you very much for taking the time to do it.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Okay, moving on to super, thank you very much, Paul. Appreciate your time and the effort on this. Moving on to super, some update, Dr. Dorf.
Thank you. We'll also start, I was gonna end with this, but since we're just talking about projects, I don't know if you've gone by to see the tennis courts.
Oh, yes.
So wild. It's remarkable. Very excited. I was actually watching, it's quite an operation. So if you haven't seen it, just go over to the parking lot and watch. There'll be four in there tomorrow. And I may go into Thursday, but tomorrow for sure. And, but it is quite an operation. It's exciting, but they're going to look great, so it's pretty exciting. We are on time, actually we're under, we're actually a little ahead and we're doing well and we are under budget. I know you guys like to do that.
Amen.
So, but that, it is exciting. I just wanted to let you know if you haven't seen it, it's something to see. I just wanted to, I know I said this in the family letter last week, but I just want to reiterate how important the budget and the legislators and governor signing off on the free meals. So the universal breakfast and lunch as a permanent decision in the budget. I mean, we talk about every student every day, we talk about equity. This certainly supports that, you know, every, we know the importance of nutrition and the academic success. And it also, you know, reduces the barriers and, you know, the stigma to the free lunch. And so this is, this is just, to me, just extremely important, you know, legislation that has passed. So I just...
Is this the entire street?
Yes.
So every school in the entire street?
Yes.
From kindergarten to 12th grades?
From law. From another company.
Thank you, legislators in Boston.
Exactly. School supplies, I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, yes, teachers do request some supplies, but we certainly provide supplies for students that need it. But I want to give a shout out to the Family Service Center. They always do backpacks, build these school supplies and some additional, you know, things, clothing and stuff for students that are in need. They also give a number of backpacks to our counselors so that if students are in need when we come into school and identify, we have backpacks for our students and they supply. So thank you to the Family Service Center. We really appreciate the partnership and the continued support for our kids.
Can I say a question? Do we know when they're giving an update?
We just, I don't know if there was a date on the last notice.
I didn't notice a date. I noticed a date for them collecting them.
And they just say thank you, they got more than the...
Yeah, and that they can like shut it off?
Yeah. I don't think there was a date on that.
I just wonder how they, there's like a date that...
Well, they notify all of their families that are a part of the service center and all else goes to schools.
Oh, okay, great. I didn't just, thanks. I didn't know if there was a restful of that, where people catch them.
First day of school is just around the corner, September 5th, two weeks. Very excited about the beginning of school and seeing the kids again. Teachers are back in on Tuesday, next Tuesday, so very excited. We had new teacher orientation this morning. We have a lot of happy new teachers. The K, we have a variety. We have some Clippers that have returned now to, to teach in our schools. We had a variety of brand new teachers, first year, to experience of over 11 years. So we have a wide variety of teachers doing this this year, so that's exciting. Convocation next Tuesday morning at 8 o'clock. The school committee is invited to attend if you would like.
Eight a.m. you said?
Eight a.m., yeah. You can come a little earlier and get a donut. They'll be in the cafeteria, there's always plenty. So, yes, and thank you to Jack and Big Stock because they continue to supply the donuts for all of our staff. That's a lot of donuts. 750, what is it? Seven, 750? Yeah, something like that, seven. That's a lot of, that's a lot of donuts. But anyway, we're very grateful to them and having that partnership. It's fun, everyone looks forward to it. Also, next Tuesday in the afternoon at 3 o'clock, we will be meeting at the aquarium in Woods Hole to recommit to our partnership with Woods Hole Institutes along with, you know, Greater Foundment, the Marine Environmental Services, the Webner, Buzzard Bay Coalition. So just many people to recommit our partnership and all those opportunities that we provide for our students. So again, to the school committee, I hope that you'll be able to come.
That's who we is. I was going to ask you, who is we? You said we are meeting, so it's the school.
The school committee, all the representatives from our different partners. And we have central office, lots of principals, there may be some teachers that come. We set it at 3 o'clock. Teachers are initiated at 2:30. The, our members in our, with our partners, you know, will still be working. So we're hoping that that's just a nice time that we can get a lot of people to come. So just want an update on the YMCA and before and after care. At three of our schools, East Boundwood, North Boundwood and T-Ticket, we are fully staffed with a number that are registered at this time. We do have a waitlist at Mall Hall. Yes, it's, sorry, I have my eight and my three at 20. We saw a waiting list of 8:00 in the morning and 3:00 in the afternoon and there's still recruiting staff. But right now, there's, there's no waiting list at three of our schools, so we're hopeful. But it is still two weeks to sign. And I do want to mention just a heads up. Last fall, we talked about it, and for the new members, this may be new information, but the Operational Services Division, OSD, it has proposed a 14%, not proposed, they have increased, the out-of-district placement cost has increased to 14%. There has been a lot of work among the superintendents in our association that 14% increase is, you know, beyond, you know, what we can handle in our budget. We're used to no more than a 2% per year. We were asking for the state to fill the pothole for one year until we can catch up on the payment with the circuit breaker. They have not made that decision. Even though they've passed portions of the supplemental budget, they have not passed the piece about dealing with this out-of-district. So they said that hopefully toward the end of August, when there's something more, I just wanted to give you a heads up that, you know, it looks like both the House and the Senate is proposing a portion of that 12%, but not the full. So I don't know what the percentage is, but I may be coming back to you asking for, to access the Special Education Stabilization Fund with the town. We've already had many conversations with, with the business director, the town manager, assistant town manager, well aware of what we've been having this for over a year because we knew this last fall, we've been having constant meetings about this. So come September meeting, I'll have more information, but we may need to access some of that, which the town fills is okay because that's what the money is there for. We have not accessed it at all.
So this is the override money, 700 approximately?
Yes, about 900, so, yeah. And it's used for exactly this, you know, one-time situations to help us out to cover. And so we feel that's perfectly within the reason. I just, we don't have a percentage, we don't know yet. I just wanted to give a heads up that we'll, we'll be talking about this as soon as we know more.
That was definitely the intent when I was following you.
And that's enough time then. Hopefully we'll have enough time to make the warrant if we have to ask for it.
So we've just been informed that there is a different process for accessing the stabilization fund. So it is voted by you, it's voted by the select, and then we can access. It doesn't have to go through town. That's what we were just informed. Yeah, so, so yes, we have time. So it actually can happen anytime. But I'm hoping, I mean, if, as soon as we know the information, then, you know, we'll bring it to, for discussion again and then come out.
All right.
So other than that, we're excited. It's about time to start school.
Great, thank you, Dr. Dorf.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I just, I've just looked in. So I actually added, this was shared with us yesterday. And this is from Bridgewater State University. And if you open it up, Boundwood Public Schools is mentioned in it. So you should have this at your seat, right? Did anyone get one?
No.
Oh, okay. Oh, you have, I'm sorry. So if you open up in the middle, Bridgewater actually talked about Boundwood Public Schools and our program with the sister school in Cape Verde. And so it was pretty exciting, this was shared yesterday that, you know, we got mentioned in there. I just wanted to hear that.
Yes, I have just have a couple of questions and I'm sure that we can answer it quickly. With the start of school, do we have any areas where we haven't been able to fill teaching positions? Just so we get the word out there in regards to, you know, it's a critical need now if anyone needs to, you know, wishes to apply for positions.
So I'm not sure that we won't fill it, but we do have a special education teacher at North Boundwood that we just learned of, that we need. So there's that, but I'm not so sure that we won't be able to. But yes, certainly get the word out on that. And that, other than some teaching assistance and some one-to-ones, we're staffed now.
Great. And you mentioned in regards to you sent out a family letter. And could we, as school committee members that don't have kids within the system, be on that mailing list?
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought everyone did receive.
We did, okay.
You're not in the school committee? Yeah, it goes, every family letter goes to the school committee members.
Okay.
But you did not get one.
I'm pretty sure I'm not seeing it, but I may have. But I'll have to...
I'm sorry that you didn't receive it, so we'll, yeah, we'll check on it.
And things like Busch, will they be in the enterprise, I'm trying?
Uh, not in the... It's on the website. It was in my letter that directed everyone to the website and it's on the website. The newspaper?
The following, yeah. To get the most changes in the paper.
Okay. So just...
It's on the website now.
Okay, great. And that's subject to change?
Correct. For any new enrollments.
Okay. Any other questions? Great, moving on to routine business. We're going to first talk about approving the minutes of July 18th, 2023. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Thank you, Kelly. Is there a second? Margaret, thank you for the second. Any discussion on the minutes?
Melissa, I think I was remote this, this meeting. I'm not totally sure, but I just don't want someone to pop on and be like, says Mike was, I don't want to do that, but...
You don't remember if you remember?
I'm pretty sure I do. Pretty sure.
Well, if you don't remember, I guess, don't be mad. Okay, so...
That's my own edit.
The edit is Mike was remote.
He was remote. I remember. Thank you.
So arrived at 18:37 remote?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Any other edits? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes with the edit of Mike arriving at 6:37 PM on the clock? Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. The next is approve the minutes of our retreat from August 3rd, 2023. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Thank you, Kelly. Any discussion? Sure. Do we have to change the address because we met at the high school? Yes, where's the address on there? Oh, I see. I feel like we should. Perhaps there is an addition, an additional line sharing? How do we normally do that? Because...
Just under, oh, just put locations.
Can you just fix it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Addition.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other edits, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, thank you, everyone. Many of them have a report. Does anyone have a report? If they would like to, Carrie, please.
I don't have a report, but I just want to say in regards to those tennis courts, it's, I see them every day. But what the kid, the field hockey team is playing out in the field now and the sports are starting and it's so neat when you drive by and I just can't see all those kids doing those. And there's a new little question on the field hockey team.
There's a few little questions.
I can see Melissa's daughter's on one.
There's a lot of other people's on this.
You know, but it's really cool when you see. That's one of my favorite things about seeing those fields, is seeing the kids throwing a sport.
Any other committee member reports?
This is a group, there's a three-year-old student who was very, at 12:00. Two of our students performed there.
Excellent.
Yes, one Morse Pond student and I still admire students because they were, they were going to the high school, so I assume he was at Lawrence.
Excellent.
So two of our students performed and they were wonderful.
Thank you, Margaret. Any other committee member report or update? Any requests for information? Seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn? Seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second? Second. Thank you. We'll call this later. Any requests? Thank you.